I call this work-study session of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 5:00 PM on January 24, 2023. For the record, the board members present are Sally Derrick, Cassandra Hatfield, Tara Herbacheck, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Eliana Garza Rojas, and myself, Les Black. We constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. I would like to just take a moment to welcome you all here tonight on this cold, wet, rainy January night. We appreciate you being here to help us with our governance responsibilities tonight. I'd also like to take a moment before we launch into our agenda to acknowledge that our hearts are heavy tonight, that our community is grieving over the loss, unexpected loss, and sudden loss of Kenny Infante. He's an assistant principal at Newman Smith High School and a graduate of Newman Smith High School, and he will be deeply missed. And there are a lot of things I could say about Kenny, but I don't think I could get through it, so I won't. But I would like to just let his family and his friends know that we have them and our thoughts and our prayers tonight. And if it's okay, I'd like us to just observe a brief moment of silence in Kenny's memory. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our agenda. Agenda item two is Audience for Guests. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. Do we have anyone for Audience for Guests? As Canada tells me, we do not. So we'll move to Agenda Item Three, which are our work-study items. And 3A is our Citizens 2023 Bond Planning Committee Report. So I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you, Dr. Black. We would like to start with thanking our partners from Huckabee. If you would please raise your hand so we could show you our appreciation. We have Ms. Leslie Weaver and Irina Blake. And we also have our partner from LPA, Craig Drone. We'd like to thank Malcolm Moroni and Lilia Gerling for their hard work and putting it all together. They put in numerous hours and the operations team, so we'd like to acknowledge our appreciation to you. We'd also like to thank Cabinet for all the work that you did behind the scenes to help support this. Thank you very much. And last but not least, we want to thank you, Bond Committee members, for the work that you put in. It's been truly, truly amazing, and we've talked as a cabinet, we've never worked with a bond committee that's been as dedicated, engaged, or as passionate as you are. And I know, you know, you went two extra meetings, and that last meeting went even an hour past the scheduled time. It's pretty amazing, and y'all had some pretty robust conversations and discussions. But on behalf of the district, we really appreciate what you've done, and obviously for our kids and our future. So we want to go ahead and start the presentation, and that'll start with Ms. Brandy Smith.
Good afternoon. Dr. Black stole my Yuki Tuesday intro. I appreciate you. Honoring my friend and classmate Kenny. It's an honor and privilege to speak to you tonight on behalf of the entire 2023 CFB ISD Citizens Bond Committee. Again, my name is Brandy Smith. I'm a single mom of three awesome kiddos. I have a sophomore at Texas Tech University, Malia Martinez, Recum Tech. My middle child, Dominic Martinez, is a freshman at the University of Texas in Austin, Hook 'Em Horns. And my youngest, Erica Martinez, is a senior at Creekview, so go Stangs. My kids attended many schools in the district from Kelly Pre-K Center, Blanton, Rosemead, Blalack, and Creekview. My children are my why, and like many others on the Bond Committee, we have a very passionate parent perspective, and a few grandparents, too. I moved to the district in 1990. Now, for some of us, that felt like yesterday, but folks, that was 33 years ago. And so like many others on our committee, we have a longstanding community member's perspective as well. I'm also a CFB alum, as I mentioned. I attended McLaughlin, Daleby Davis, Blalack, and Smith. I was in many activities throughout my time in the district, from track, spirit squad, basketball, volleyball choir, theater, cheerleading, and my favorite was orchestra. I graduated from Newman Smith in 2001 with a violin scholarship to three different colleges. So like many others on our Bond Committee, we have a strong student perspective. And we even had a senior at Creekview on our committee who was able to give us a fresh, real-time outlook. We have volunteers on our committee. I'm a member of the Texas PTA, a lifetime member, and I currently serve at Creekview's PTSA. So we have a strong volunteer perspective. I was also previously employed by CFB as a contract worker. I taught private violin and viola lessons at Blalack and also at Polk. So like current teachers and retired teachers that we have on our committee, we have a strong teacher's perspective as well. Now, currently, I work as an underwriter at a medical stop-loss insurance company in Plano. I know, boring. But basically, what that means is I look at numbers all day. So like many other business professionals on our committee, we have a sound financial perspective as well. Now, I've told you so much about the variety of backgrounds on our committee, not only for our accolade, but for yours and for our district as a whole. So many success stories come out of CFB, and there's so much love behind this project. We should all be proud to have the opportunity to support such an amazing district that reaches so many families. #CFBproud. As you've heard tonight, my roots in CFB are extensive, and our passion for children, staff, and the community is intense. Trust me when I tell you that every decision, every line item, every opportunity that this bond package has was reviewed, re-reviewed, discussed, voted on, revoted on by our committee with this same intensity. We do not take lightly the 38 schools and more than 24,000 students that this bond will impact currently, let alone the future of CFB. I know that CFB has always believed in the love and support of the whole student and this community, and I hope that you'll keep that in mind as we have the past several months. Thank you for your time and consideration. Let's get started.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Ruth Shackman. It is my honor and privilege to start this presentation. Dr. Black, Mrs. Derrick, Board, Mr. Marsh, thank you so much for having us here. My role in the district started in, as an English teacher at Vivian Field Middle School in 2000. I brought with me two very small boys who have grown up to be exceptional young men. They attended McLaughlin, McCoy, Perry, Vivian Field, and were both graduated from Turner High School, Harrison in 2011, and Hunter in 2015. I currently have the distinct honor of being the HB 4545 English teacher at Creekview High School. We are grateful to be with our district almost 25 years after we started. There you go. All right, CFB at a glance. Here's a look at our district as a whole. While CFB supports a diverse group of learners, teachers, staff members, and community members, the committee members shared stories of individual students, their sons, daughters, family members, and special students that made their dedication to our district heartfelt, a life-changing commitment. Every time we met those students, those families, this community was in the forefront of every decision that we made. We are proud of our four high schools, six middle schools, 24 elementary schools, five support facilities, and admin. On the chart above us is the 30-year bond history. Looking back, you can see that in the distant past, we held bond elections every three to five years. There is a 15-year gap from 2003 to 2018. In 2018, voters approved $350 million bond, and since that time, our district has addressed critical maintenance and support issues. The district renovated, updated campuses in keeping with a new grand vision for our schools. This is an overview of our committee. As Brandy told you, community members represent a true cross-section of our entire district. We had a wide variety of perspectives from the entire community, and I can tell you that we were successful in our endeavors. This is another way to look at the diverse makeup of the committee members. In addition to a variety of ages, we represented some of CFB's newest residents, as well as those of us who have been here longer than 20 years. The CFB Citizens Bond Planning Committee is made up of parents, current and past, community members, students, teachers, administrators. More than 120 residents expressed interest in serving on the committee. On the screen are the 60 individuals who were selected and attended meetings. The board liaison for us was Tara Herbacheck. Thank you, Ms. Herbacheck. We are very grateful for your help. She can testify to how in-depth the study was, how passionate we were in what we were doing. And I am so grateful and thankful for CFB administration team, who provided information and support every step of the process. Come on. There we go. The committee charge. We took the board's charge of our committee seriously. We worked to represent the entire committee, community. We assessed and prioritized the district's current and long-term facility needs. We considered the educational needs of all students. We recommend a plan we believe is fiscally sound, and we've developed a recommendation on how to proceed with long-range plan. I am pleased to be a part of the group here this evening that are bringing this recommendation forward to you. It was very important that this process be extremely transparent. Throughout the entire process, our committee meetings, agendas, and presentations were available to the public on the CFB website. Please listen now to Diane Etheridge, who will introduce herself and tell you a little bit about the process.
Good evening. My name is Diane Etheridge. I am a lifetime resident of Carrollton Farmers Branch and alumni of CFB schools. My husband and I have two daughters, who are also graduates or alumni of the district, and one of them being a district employee. Additionally, two of my grandsons attend, or current students, at Rainwater Elementary and Blalack Middle School. After retiring from Baylor Scott &amp; White Healthcare Systems, I've spent my time volunteering in the district, serving on several local PTA and council PTA boards. CFB has always been a district of excellence during my whole lifetime. So when I was presented with this opportunity to serve on the Bond Committee, I saw it first as a learning opportunity because I really knew nothing about the process itself. But more importantly, I saw it as an opportunity to see the legacy of CFB continue for our students, our staff, our parents, and our community. Talk a little bit about the committee process now. As someone mentioned before, the Citizens Bond Committee met nine times over a six-month period of time. We studied a lot of information, had lots of great discussion, and we even added on two meetings at the very end to ensure that we were able to complete our work thoroughly. This next slide is a look at some of the various ways that we were able to be involved during the meeting. And throughout the process, we engaged in group work, had the opportunity to give individual feedback, and rotated with different groups, giving us an opportunity to work with people that we did not know and hear different perspectives. This slide is a real high overview of our nine meetings and what took place at those meetings. Our first five meetings were focused on studying various projects, providing input on those projects. You can see on this slide, we didn't focus on just one area of the district or one area of learning. We studied everything from athletics to fine arts to early childhood education. We looked at individual campuses, their HVAC systems, and bathroom fixtures. Another thing I'd like to point out on this slide, which was really important, in our first meeting, we spent a lot of time defining consensus and determining what we felt the threshold would be for projects to be included in our recommendations. So when you see the projects and the dollars amounts discussed later on in this presentation, remember that this represents 75%, a large majority of our committee. We were able to tour some of our newer facilities, like Sheffield Elementary, along with some of the older facilities, like Carrollton Elementary, Blalack Middle School, and RL Turner High School. After each tour, the committee provided feedback to the district about each site and how its elements supported the district's vision for learning. And after each area of study, we also provided feedback on which elements should be prioritized. That feedback was then used to develop the packages and options that you'll see later on in this presentation, which then led to our final recommendations. Along the way, there was a lot of opportunity for small group discussion and to work collaboratively with others. This was very helpful in ensuring that we heard different viewpoints and different life experiences throughout the entire process. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Noe, who will introduce himself and talk about other things we considered to ensure we were understanding the big picture. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Noe Franco. I want to start by thanking CFB for giving me the opportunity to serve in this committee. It's an honor, and it's something that I do not take lightly. I was a longstanding community member. I've been in the district since 1990 as well, so good 30-plus years. I attended and I graduated from RL Turner, so I know the community and the schools well. There, I fostered the love of sports and really all of the things that make me who I am today. You know, I loved to play tennis. I played tennis for a long time. But I also developed the love for buildings and architecture. I am a, I still remember to this day, all of the classes, like drafting classes, research and development, the building trades, also the tennis tournaments that I went on during my time at Turner. And all of those were super exciting and things that helped me develop. And so all these memories are my why, or at least part of my why, I wanted to serve in this committee. So, you know, CFB helped me reach my goals as an individual professional. I did attend Texas A&amp;M and graduated with a degree in architecture and construction management. So through that process, I was able to learn a lot of things and things, but that foundation here is what really helped me. So I've been in the construction industry for, well, commercial construction industry for 20-plus years. And a lot of that time, I spent building K-12 facilities for a lot of districts, from California, Texas, many different places. So I bring a lot of experience in that realm as well. My wife and I have two kids, two wonderful kids, and, you know, they've attended Kinder and all the way through high school now. My daughter is seventh grade at Field. Both of my kids attended Stark, and my son is currently a freshman at RL Turner, so following his dad's steps, I guess. So that's the other part of the reason why I want to be part of this committee, just my kids, the community, all the things that I experienced. I want to make sure that other people get that same experience. So with that said, what I'm here to present to you, we'll start with the demographics, if I can make that up. There we go. So about the demographic study. As you can see on this slide, we heard from school district strategist regarding the district's 15-year enrollment history and the 10-year enrollment history and the projections. The demographers report was an important piece of the puzzle as we were studying all of the different factors and things that we were discussing. And it helped us understand the enrollment trends, past, and what's going to be in the future as well. So as you can see in the slide, the data shows that CFB is holding steady on right around 24,000 to 25,000 student enrollment. And with this information that was presented to us, us as a committee allowed us to consider options for early childhood education across the district, which was really important to the committee. With a steady enrollment and some exciting capacity within our schools, our buildings, our buildings have the space needed to address early childhood needs, offer pre-K instruction, and more students and families in the district and the community. So that was very important to us. The next section, the actual budget. As you will see later on in our presentation, our recommendation tonight, we will share some costs and budgeting numbers with you. It's important to understand that those numbers are what we call an all-end bond budget, meaning this includes all of the items that you see on the slide. And as you can see, the total project budget is more than just construction cost. It is a turnkey cost for the projects that includes things like escalation costs or projected escalation costs, soft costs, fees, furniture, equipment, technology, and funds for contingency monies in case something comes up during the construction process. So that is that slide. So a big part of what we talked about in, can't remember if it was meeting three, but we had a lot of information given to us and something that I experience every day as a professional. I can tell you a lot of war stories about escalation in the last couple of years, especially in the K-12 market. So as all of us are aware, the effects of the pandemic and the things that we've gone through, not just on our personal finances, but in business, things like just buying eggs and things that you go see in the grocery store just skyrocketed, right? So this inflation and all the costs have really hit the construction industry and the cost of how much it costs to actually build a building. So in the slide, you'll see this illustrates the anticipated inflation that in the time of the bond, in the next 18 months, you will expect to see in some of the raw materials that are needed to be included in the projects. So as you might be thinking, why not cost come down before we move forward in the bond? If you're thinking, well, maybe things are going to come down and slow down. Well, history tells us that most of the time, once prices go up, they'll never really go down. So there's really no time like the present to go ahead and move forward with this bond. If we wait any longer, then costs will probably go up. So that's really what this slide is telling us. The other big part of our learning was having industry professionals such as myself come talk to us about their experiences, what things they're seeing and looking at in the market. So, you know, our committee had the opportunity to hear from them, and we heard about not only how average construction material costs have risen over the last couple of years, over 20% since the pandemic started, but also how the material and the equipment necessary to build these buildings has gone up in lead times, meaning it takes longer for fabrication to happen. It takes longer for the delivery of these materials to come to the job site. So those are very important factors that we have to take into consideration as well. Things like, for example, electrical gear, HVAC equipment, insulation, studs, metal studs, wood products, even paint. If you can believe it or not, electrical components is kind of one of the latest things that have started creeping up and delays in the cost. Things that happened because of the war have delayed the installation of small little components, electronic components. So that's been one of the biggest delays in the industry lately. So as we leave this reality day-to-day, in my professional endeavors, I have come to understand that, yes, this has become a new normal, and we have to act now so we don't get caught on the next big wave that is surely to come our way. But there are ways to manage the potentially and potentially lessen the pains of this reality. And I am encouraged to know that the district is extremely proactive and leads the way in finding out-of-the-box solutions to issues like what I've been talking about. One of the ones that I heard through the process is how the district has been purchasing HVAC equipment outside of construction contracts, and they actually have all this equipment provided to the project so that you can mitigate some of the lead times and cost issues that we've seen in the industry. So that was pretty impressive to me. And this kind of out-of-the-box thinking solutions will lead to more successful projects, in my opinion. So that's what we learned from our industry partners. So now I'd like to turn it over to Billy Bob to hear about the financial on bond.
Good evening. Thank y'all for having me here. It's what a pleasure it was to serve on this committee. I'm Billy Bob Messer. I own my own consulting firm here in Carrollton. You know, I was really impressed when I joined the committee to hear how many of the members went to schools here in CFB. I did not. I grew up in a small town east of here. I married, spent some time in College Station, and then married an RL Turner High School English teacher. So I married into the district. We currently have two kids attending McCoy. And when I had the opportunity to join the committee, I joined it, you know, for them, obviously, for my wife and her passion for CFB schools. And then more than anything, just the thought that, I feel like we sometimes get away from the idea that the public school system benefits the entire community, not just the students who attend there. The reach is far and wide. So as a member of that community, I really want to see the district thrive. So this is, I don't think this is going to come to news to the board members, but for the audience, you know, our school tax rates are made up of kind of two of these buckets. One, the maintenance and operations tax rate. So that's to pay for like the light bill, and that's to pay for just kind of your standard day-to-day, what it costs to do business here in the school district. Most of that rate goes to paying salaries and wages. That's where most of that goes. This other bucket, and this was news to me because I didn't really understand how all this worked, the other bucket, the interest in sinking fund tax rate. So that rate goes to pay debt service. So that goes to pay off bond dollars. Those dollars are used for big items. Those are used for, you know, you mentioned HVAC, HVAC repairs and replacements, replacing schools, all the big-ticket items that, you know, the school district has to do, not once every day, but, you know, once every few years. So when we pay our tax rate at the end of the year, citizens, we pay the total tax rate, and we see the total tax rate. We got these two buckets. So everything we talk about tonight, as far as the Bond Committee, is focused on this INS tax rate bucket. That rate's set by the district, 100% controlled by the district. That rate's set by the district, hundred percent controlled by the district. So that's the the focus of what our our committee was focused on tonight or during our process. No offense to anyone presenting tonight, this is my favorite chart. For a few years, it's one, I I really love low tax rates, um, but also two, I think it shows just what a good steward the district is of the funds that that setting those rates, it doesn't do it with a with a with a lightheart. It takes it very serious. It's stewardship responsibilities. When we look at districts in the area, we have the lowest INS tax rate, lowest overall tax rate, uh, and that's really impressive with what this district's been able to do with those dollars and and be mindful of of how to spend those. And I think that that was important to the committee as we went through this. You know, the committee was very mindful of this of this chart and this reality and being kind of in that lower lower tax category was important to us. We got to hear from the school district's financial advisor, Hilltop Securities. Uh, they they looked at a variety of things, I would imagine, one of which was, you know, projected growth in the districts. We've heard about the demographer and what the projected growth in the the uh the district pop- the the student population, but also just growth in the overall district around it, including home value increases. And and kind of said that, okay, if if um if we don't change the INS tax rate and we maintain the the same rate, our bond capacity is seven hundred and nineteen million. We're going to talk about the ballot language here in a minute, but it's important to keep in mind that all the ballot language is required by state law to say this is a property tax rate increase, no matter what we do. So that's fun. This is, so our our committee, like I said, was very mindful of of maintaining this low tax rate. And so our our recommendation is to not raise INS tax rate, to stick with that seven hundred and nineteen million dollar bond capacity and keep the INS tax rate the same. You see, this illustration here shows the impact of of this recommendation on a home with a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar value, which happens to be the average in the area. Uh, and as you can see, the the passing the bond or, you know, if the bond passes, there's not going to be a dollar increase ta- the the tax rate will stay the same. So dollar in dollar impact on a home of that value will also stay the same. Skipping to here, so so again, I mentioned that the the state law changed since the two thousand and eighteen bond. And we have to say, this is a property tax increase on the ballot, no matter what. Even though we're recommending that you keep the rate the same, that language still has to go on the ballot. In our last meeting that went an hour over, part of the reason it lasted so long is there was sixty three percent of the committee was in favor of actually raising the INS tax rate by half a penny. And and through those discussions, we set the bar at seventy five percent consensus um and we stuck to that. So we we uh, you know, we're very mindful of staying in that low low tax rate. We're recommending the the seven hundred and nineteen million dollar bond capacity and keeping the INS tax rate the same. Uh, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deanna and let her talk about the facility needs.
Good evening. I'm Deanna Nunez and I am um a CFB proud educator, parent and community member. I have three kids currently attending the district. I mean, they attend Janie Stark Elementary, Dewitt Perry Middle School and RL Turner High School. Tonight, I'll be talking to you about the facility needs in this district and projects that we studied over the last several months. My family and or I have been on or have used um most of the CFB's facilities throughout our time here. As tonight, I'll probably be on another campus for a basketball game. So after working the full day. So um needless to say that I've been around and have been on most campuses here. Sometimes we're um at CFB more than we are at home. So it's great pride to and interest about what happens in the future of CFB and our schools. And as they've said before, we've had some heated debates on some facility needs. So um as Diane mentioned earlier, we studied lots of information and one of the things we agreed early on is the critical needs like roofing and HVAC units must be addressed. This was a non-negotiable for us. Later in this process, um, when uh we just began referring to those kind of needs as our base scope. So we decided that the uh roofing and HVACs are the base scope. These are what we all need. We also looked at the cost of renovating and updating some of our oldest schools, including Carrollton, Central and Farmers Branch. Carrollton is now seventy two years old and I have taught in one of part of the oldest classrooms over there. So I do know that. Um, it also became clear that replacing the three campuses would be more cost efficient than renovating them. And and this is the line where C CFB's history of replacing those elementary schools. Um, we also looked at the next tier of elementary schools um in terms of age and those were for No, McCoy, Rosemead and Kent. We studied the middle schools with a vision for updating two campuses at a time. As you know, Perry and Field were renovated with a twenty eighteen bond funds. Um, my son lived through Field and I've lived through Perry now um with the bond updates. So it's been fun. Um, we consider creating the same grand vision for renovations at Blaylock and Long since those schools are now forty four and thirty nine years old. It's time for an update. We also know that renovations at Bush and Polk could be considered in the future. With Long now being forty four years old, it is due from some modernization and updates in the core and instructional areas. The same is true with Laylock. We have an opportunity to reva- renovate it to provide students with similar learning experiences that students at Perry and Field are experiencing now. Our group had an opportunity to tour Turner High School and got to see firsthand the amazing renovations that were possible with the twenty eighteen bond. As you know, only certain spaces were planned in the part of the twenty eighteen bond as to start that grand vision. In twenty twenty three bond, we could finish those renovations to ensure the grand vision is complete across both the CFB's oldest high schools. Um, on that tour, we went to some of the classrooms and committee members were like, there's not a teacher teaching in that classroom. And I was like, I was there for meet the teacher. My son's classroom is this room and yes, they are teaching in those classrooms. For Creekview and Ranchview High Schools, we consider some strategic ways to show the building some love and freshening up those interiors. Um, we had big discussions about bathrooms. That's part of those freshening up. We spent a lot of time considering what early childhood opportunities were ripe for the district and the community as we move forward. We considered what standardization in each early childhood classroom should have, specialized furniture to develop learning through play, access to appropriately sized restrooms and more. There goes our discussion about restrooms again. Similar to early childhood education, we wanted to ensure our special our special education students and teachers had access to the same safety features and spaces that were appropriate for students we were serving. We study how to update classes and restrooms yet again, including appropriate changing tables, restrooms and playgrounds. For CTE, we wanted to build on the work that was part of our twenty eighteen bond program. There was significant CTE upgrades at Smith and Turner, but our community also looked at expanding our CTE offerings to include ag and food resources at Ranchview, education and public service at Creekview, and energy and STEM pathway at Turner and manufacturing at Smith. We wanted to complete the whole CTE program. The Fine Arts Director presented information about the art, dance, band, choir, theater spaces across the district. We heard about challenges and opportunities and had to consider projects that were feasible within the school's existing footprints. Similar to fine arts, we heard a lot of opportunities to update and expand our athletic spaces. We studied everything from learning software used in elementary P to the need for additional storage, training rooms, gyms and locker rooms. Safety and security could be one of the most important things we talked about with this bond. Not only have recent events showed a spotlight on safety and security needs in our schools across the U.S., but in the state of Texas is issuing new rules for safety and security. CFB will need to address this. These include perimeter fencing, bullet resistant film and more. And finally, we also learned about the importance of our technology infrastructure and how critical it is to have a redundant network to ensure our district stays online in the event of a fiber cut or emergency. We have an opportunity to expand our fiber network and protect the integrity of our district's systems and functions. I now turn it over to Brandy Smith to discuss the projects that were considered.
Hello again. All right. In our final few meetings, each committee member had the opportunity to rank the facility option and cast a ballot like the one you see up here um on the projects that we wanted to be included in our recommendation. The district took all that data, all one thousand four hundred and seventy data points just for elementary schools alone and helped organize those projects in a way that reflected our ranking and enabled us to give that final vote on meeting nine. Um, we looked at the groups of elementary schools, as you see up here in terms of age. Um, you can see on the left, the six tiers that we use for elementary schools grouping those campuses. As a result of those ballots we submitted on meeting six, it was clear, like at the top here, um, that our committee placed a high priority on replacing those three oldest elementary schools that were mentioned, Carrollton, Central and Farmers Branch, and then allocated money to renovate what we considered the base needs at the next tier of our elementary schools. Also in our ballot feedback, you can see here that our committee ranked essential safety and security projects high, as well as plumbing, electrical and playground updates. For the roofs, we prioritized elementary schools that had roofs installed between two thousand eight and two thousand nine, which was about fifteen years ago. This slide shows those results. Um, if you look at the number to the right of each campus, you'll see how the project categories ranked after the committee voting. The lower the score, the higher the priority. In five of those tiers, you see early childhood was either our highest ranked priority or our four categories as well. If you look at tier six um at the bottom right, again, you can see that eighty nine percent of the committee preferred to replace those three schools. We then had the opportunity to vote and rank the same way for secondary schools, this time one thousand two hundred and forty seven data points. Again, our committee ranked safety and security high, followed by plumbing and electrical, then the HVAC units and roofs. At the middle school level, we looked at three tiers. Perry and Field were in that top tier because, as mentioned, they were both both recently received major renovations in the twenty eighteen bond. Bush and Polk were in tier two and Blaylock and Long were until tier three called old. Now Malcolm and I both take offense that anything in the eighties is considered old, but that was the name of the tier. You can see at the bottom here that we had consensus that the educational and common spaces at Blaylock and Long needed to be addressed. And at the top, you can see that after our first round of voting, our committee was split on how best to address the needs at Bush and Polk. But we did have a chance to come back and vote again in the final meetings. Here are the results of the middle school prioritization. Uh, like you saw with the elementary ranking on the right hand side, the lower the score is the highest priority. Our high schools were grouped into two tiers, one for Ranchview and Creekview and another for Smith and Turner. Newish and old. You can see here at the bottom, like the last slide, um, in the first round of voting, we had clear consensus that we should address both educational and common spaces at Smith and Turner, completing that grand vision that was mentioned earlier. But here at the top, again, um, the first vote, we were split on how to address the renovations at Creekview and Ranchview. The results of the high school level show on the right that facility updates and special education needs were ranked the highest priority. We also studied the needs at CFB's additional sites. You can see their age ranking here, the CDA, B Salzar, Mary Grimes and the Outdoor Learning Center. We had a lot of fun conversations about the Outdoor Learning Center and how many people are impacted uh throughout the district, young and old. Here's that feedback. Um, we had nearly one hundred percent consensus on the project at CDA and the Outdoor Learning Center. Taking all of that feedback, we had the chance to come back and submit our final votes during meeting nine in a way that was decisive and helped our committee build consensus on this package that we're presenting tonight. So at this time, I'm excited to turn it over to Tamika to give you our full recommendation.
All right. Good afternoon, board and community members. My name is Tamika Adams. I'm a mother of four, two of which are at the Perry Middle School GTE programs, two that will be entering McCoy in the next few years. I've lived in McCoy in Carrollton since two thousand and seven, uh, moved here specifically so that my children could be a part of the uh great school system that I heard so much about. Although I didn't grow up here, I've been a PTA member since two thousand and nine. PTA members since two thousand and nine, volunteered at several school events, been on multiple field trips, gone to plays, math and geography bees, African American read-ins, sporting events. And this is not just a me thing, it's a family thing. Uh, my husband has volunteered for the McCoy Watchdog Program. And even though we don't have schools, um, kids at these schools currently, my mom actually is a works uh volunteers at McCoy's Tuesday Newsday and uh she also is the infamous Newman High School Copy Angel. They love CFB as much as I do and are just as passionate. So during this process, I've walked the halls, had great conversations and met folks who love CFB just as much as my family and I do. And we have the same visions of what it could be in the future. So let's talk about our recommendations. As you've heard from several of the bond committee members, we really took a holistic approach at what we reviewed, um, when we reviewed the wants and needs of the CFB facilities. We studied thirty eight sites, over a hundred projects that could have had a price tag of over three billion dollars, but like Billy Bob and Dr. Ruth alluded to earlier, we were a fiscally responsible bunch and maintained a laser focus on necessity and budget. Part of that necessity was making sure our children remained safe and connected. So to accomplish this, we are recommending um that updated security at every campus is completed, critical maintenance at every site, uh, facility upgrades at at least twenty six of the schools, critical infrastructure and system improvement to support all the students and staff. And all this, a bond package to stay at the twenty cent INS tax rate that we talked about. The projects are organized into four categories, safety and security, student support facilities, replacement schools, renovations and updates. High ranking projects like special education and early childhood fall under the student support facilities category, while other items like HVAC and fiber upgrades, which we agreed were non-negotiable, fall under the renovations and updates. Yet, as I said earlier, safety and security was our main concern and our first priority. So when you look at the cost breakdown, you'll see that nearly half of the funds would be allocated for renovations and updates. When you consider the age of our schools and the fact that CFB hadn't had a bond uh for fifteen years, it's understandable that many of our projects fall under this category. The four replacement schools make up twenty eight percent, student support facilities eighteen percent, safety and security five percent and just five percent of the total package. So let's talk a little bit about safety. With that five percent of the budget, we wanted to make sure that doors had locks or could lock, cameras were put in place or made functional, and most importantly, we wanted to make sure that access was controlled. With that in mind, our community recommends thirty seven point seven million dollars be allocated for safety and security. Now, if you're a teacher or a parent with children in the school system, the burning question in your mind is probably, how does this affect my school, right? So let's take a look at the impact on uh the site level. As you can see, we made that safety, we made sure that safety and security had the broadest stroke of coverage. Essentially, uh, the safety projects will touch every student and every campus across CFB ISD. Next, let's look at support facilities. The student support facility category addresses everything from special education renovations to early childhood classrooms, bathrooms, and furniture. It also includes ag site renovations, which would not just enhance the experience of the multiple grades that use the facilities for field trips, I know I've been on a bunch of them, but it would also impact the CTE programs, which we are also recommending to be expanded. Last but not least, updates to the fine arts, PE, and athletic areas. These projects would total $130 million. Here's how that would break down by site. Although not as broad range as safety, this slide shows you exactly which schools would receive the updates based on our recommendation. Notice, however, that each school received some type of upgrade, and every school received updates to special education, which, as you know, was a topic of high consensus with our committee and had tons of room for opportunity. So let's move on to the second largest category, replacement schools. As I said earlier, we talked, we walked the halls, squeezed through narrow hallways, stooped down from the slanted ceilings, and some of us just kind of peeked into those rooms with low lighting and no windows. For these, and so many other reasons, our committee recommends replacing three elementary schools, Carrollton, Central, and Farmers Branch. In addition, we recommend creating a new combined campus for Mary Grimes and B Salazar. The replacement budget is just under $200 million. Here's the impact at the site level. These are the features that will be included at the new schools: modern safety and security, collaboration and makerspaces, new early childhood classrooms, updated bathrooms, technology, and storm shelters. Finally, let's talk about the elephant in the room, renovations. Look, we all love a good drab-to-fab story, right? But this isn't HDTV, and no way are we talking about the reality of construction and materials. So this makes renovations and updates the largest category. Every facility would be impacted by these features. This includes critical technology, infrastructure updates needed to ensure the district stays online, restroom updates, which we had a lot of discussions about, refreshes at some of our front offices and libraries, as well as cafeteria and classroom rentals. We also recommended improvements to the roofs and HVAC units at 19 sites. All this can be accomplished with $349 million, and it will have the most impact on all of our teachers, staff, and students. Now to the site level impact. As you can see, the renovations would take place at campuses across the district. In particular, note our older campuses, which really need these improvements. So to summarize these categories again, they are safety and security, student support facilities, replacement schools, renovations, and updates. This brings our total impact to $716,440,000. This amount is within the district's bonding capacity, meaning CFB ISD can issue $716 million worth of bonds without increasing that INS tax rate. Before I make the committee's official recommendation, I'd like to thank you for being part of the process, from the board members and community volunteers that are here this evening, as well as the parents and community members who are watching. We appreciate your time and support. So as a committee, we recommend that the CFB ISD Board of Trustees call a bond election to the May 2023 ballot. We recommend that the projects outlined on the previous slides be included in the bond proposal to update safety and security system, improve our technology infrastructure, replace three of the oldest elementary schools, address early childhood education, update special education spaces, and replace critical systems that need to be updated. We recommend a single proposition for $716,440,000. Again, thank you for your consideration, and now I'll turn it over to Rob, who's going to review some results.
Good evening, excuse me. My name is Rob Shattick, and I will review the community survey results. A little bit about me, my family moved here in the mid-'90s, and I am a 1998 graduate of Newman Smith. While there, I participated in the Acapella Choir, newspaper, and yearbook, and I was the mascot my senior year, Go Trojans. I don't think we have a thing, so we'll leave that. I had a sword and a shield. I attended Oklahoma State and returned back to Carrollton shortly thereafter and have lived here ever since. I work in the finance industry as a senior relationship manager. Now, my wife is an assistant principal for the pre-K partnership program in Dallas ISD, and we have two daughters, one at Newman Smith and one at Country Place, respectively. I wanted to join this committee to give back to the school district and the community at large, and it's been a privilege to be part of this entire process. Okay, so we are grateful that the district engaged a third-party survey firm to get a sense of how our entire community would respond to a bond election. They used Basilese Associates, an opinion research group out of Austin, who not only asked CFB residents about their level of support for a bond, but also used regression analysis to help us and the district learn how to best communicate certain projects and determine which were most favorable. The survey was conducted in early this past December, and we received the report during our meeting on December 8th. One of the first things that they asked survey respondents is their view, overall view of CFB ISD. And you can see that a large majority, that's 67%, have a positive impression of the district. Then what they did next in their survey is they asked respondents if they support a bond before telling them anything about it. This is what they call the initial ballot, and it's meant to emulate a voter who walks into the polling location, like many of us have done in the past, and sees a bond on the ballot without knowing anything else about it. You'll see that they asked survey respondents if they'd vote for $670 million in bonds, which of course is the number before we got to our consensus, and that would also be a property tax increase. So 607 million bonds, which is a property tax increase. Now, remember what Billy Bob shared earlier, all ballots will say this is a property tax increase, whether or not the tax rate stays the same or not. And you can see that the initial ballot showed 53% of respondents were in favor of a bond election. 11% were unsure and 35% were against it. And then throughout the survey, Basilese asked additional questions and is able to educate voters about specific projects throughout the survey. They then follow up with a question that asks, having heard more about it, would you vote for or against the bond? And you can see that the support increased on the informed ballot. And after learning more about what was being proposed, the number jumped from 53% in favor to 74% in favor. In fact, all three categories improved. The fours went up, the unsurers went down, and the against dropped to 20%. So one other thing that they shared is the importance of the intensity or how strongly someone feels about the proposal. And looking at the initial ballot, there was only nine percentage points difference between those strongly for and those strongly against. And it was 30% strongly in favor to 21% strongly against. But the informed ballot shows that intensity really grew for those in support. It went from 30% strongly for to 46% strongly for, which is a 33% percentage points higher than those strongly against. So what we learned from the presenter is that those who have strong feelings are most likely to vote. This is a busy page, but in addition to the initial and informed ballots, Basilese also asked about specific projects. Now, if you take a look at the blue column, you can see that every project showed that respondents were in favor of these projects. The top four elements were essential upgrades to schools, like HVAC systems, roofs, plumbing, et cetera, special education classrooms and restrooms, CTE programs, and safety and security. And they also asked about replacing three of the district's oldest elementary schools, Carrollton, Central, and Farmers Branch, and 70% of respondents were in favor of these projects and with only 10% unsure. So this was a very comprehensive survey. We received an in-depth presentation and had an opportunity to ask questions of the pollster. The key findings he shared were, CFB ISD has a 67% positive image rating, with 35% of those having a strong positive impression. Support for a bond was 53% on the initial ballot, and that rose to 74% on the informed ballot. And when given the choice between a bond that kept the 20 cent INS tax rate and a bond that would raise the rate half a penny, and a bond that would raise the rate one whole cent, most respondents would actually prefer a bond that raised the INS tax rate half a penny. Messages that tested well were messages about general improvements, safety, and the district's low tax rate. Overall, we were very pleased to see that the survey results showed the community would support a bond package. I think it's a strong indication that our residents and taxpayers want to know that we are maintaining that our investments and ensuring students have a safe place to learn while also staying fiscally responsible. So I'm going to turn it back over to Ruth, who will talk about the next steps.
All right, next steps and looking ahead. For the benefit of the audience and anyone watching, I want to share what the next steps are. We, please take some time on your own to study our recommendations. Please seek any clarification from administration and hold workshops if needed. And finally, it is the Board of Trustees' role to consider calling a bond election. In accordance to a state law, you have until February 17th to take action on calling a bond election to be on the May ballot. You can see that's in about three and a half weeks. We're sharing this slide as an informational item only. There are no projects in our recommendation that would require a separate proposition, but there are new legislations since CFB's last bond that require separate propositions for things like stadiums, naditoriums, technology devices. Should the board choose to include some of these types of projects, the district would work with the bond council to ensure the propositions are outlined appropriately. Looking ahead, training on election ethics and what the board and employees can and cannot do during an election will be scheduled. The district and communication team will execute a comprehensive communication plan to educate voters on the proposal, and then, if and when the bond passes, design could begin on the projects. It would be a collaborative design process, including teacher and student input along the way. And finally, here's a look at election dates in April and May. Voter registration deadline is April 6th, and the deadline to apply for a ballot by mail is April 18th. Early voting begins Monday, April 24th, and you can see the election day circled Saturday, May 6th. Thank you so much for your attention. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, it was a fascinating proposal. Thanks to all of you who were presenting. Remarkable job. Board members, I want to turn it over to see if there are comments or questions, but I want to start with Ms. Herbacheck, who was our liaison for the committee.
Yes, thank y'all. Great representation of a lot of nights, and I can attest on the ninth meeting, the second additional meeting, that we had the extra hour that was there, and there was a last-minute, what would you call it, a hail mary call of someone saying, hold up, this is not right, we gotta look at this again. So as people were getting up out of their seats and walking out, they were called back and revoted, and something changed. It resulted in a change. So I will, I just want to say the passion and the involvement and the dedication, several people have commented, it makes my heart happy because I fully believe in the involvement of community in making decisions about our schools and our school district. I mean, it is a priority. They are your schools. They are your schools. So I will acknowledge to my board colleagues, and the committee knows this, that when I spoke to them at the last meeting, I acknowledged that I could not speak on your behalf, but that I was quite confident that you would be okay with me expressing our thanks and gratitude to the committee for the extensive dedicated effort that was put into this process. I also want to say to my colleagues, in watching the process and the development, and I've been vocal in the past about this process and why the community needs to be involved, and can say that, you know, from the very start, that has been covered in some of our other presentations by Malcolm and his team, is Malcolm here, Malcolm and his team, about the efforts that went into kind of the identification of needs, wants, impacts, before this group got together. So if you remember, there were steps before. And so while this committee was presented with the tours and information and asks and wants and needs, I am confident that this was a community-developed, community-led decision process on what was included. My initial ask at one of the first meetings to the committee was that they, you know, did, looking back, it was kind of ridiculous, but that they did participate in the process and go, and that, you know, that at the end of it, that while, you know, each individual community member might not have, or committee member, might not have gotten their wants or needs or ask, you know, included in the final recommendation, that they too could attest to the process that was used to develop and be on board with what the ultimate committee did, let's call it committee as a whole, like board as a whole, you know, from that. And so I hope that's how they ended the process with, and that. My ask of the board, you know, now is, of course, any questions or comments or anything tonight and this evening, it's a lot of information to get in one night, but there's a lot of things that we as board members have to consider in parts of the next step. You know, yes, we've heard, you know, from these committees, the community surveys, you know, how there's a balance of our community, you know, there. What's the right decision? What is our actions as the right stewards? You know, but I do believe that there was effort taken to make sure, not just effort, dedicated, precise effort to make sure that the district was covered and touched by any action that the board might take, and if that goes forward, ultimately, that if the voters decide to move forward. So it was an absolute privilege to serve with these, you know, with old friends and new friends, and it was, I just can't even, I can't even comment enough on the effort and the dedication that the committee did. Thank you.
Comments, questions from anyone else? Ms. Derek?
I don't know if we pushed the button or not. Okay, good. I want to just, I guess, build upon what you said. You obviously had a much more inside view than the rest of us did, and as someone who sat where you are back for the 2018 bond, I mean, I can see all the work that y'all did, and even though I wasn't at those nine meetings, what you're saying, I'm like, I just saw that. Like, in your presentation, everything y'all said and the work y'all did, it is so evident to me, so thank you, thank you, because that is not an easy task, and it just, it makes my heart happy, I missed your line, because for our community on their own time to come together and really put the time and effort into this, I mean, that means so much to us, because we need y'all to help us figure out what is right for our community. So I cannot thank y'all enough. This is incredible. The whole time, I just kept thinking, this is incredible. I have one question, and I have no idea who this is going to be geared to, so I'm just going to put it out in the universe, and then Mr. Marsh, you can help me figure out who this is supposed to be for. Just related to the three schools that they're recommending for teardown, because I know that's going to be a big question of the community, what kind of, not only demographic study work did we do, but enrollment work did we do to ensure that that's the right decision for those schools?
I think Mr. Mulrooney. Can you respond to that one?
Sorry, was not expecting that. So that was part of that demographic study, and we see that little bit of trend either up or down, where we do see a growth in our early childhood and those special ed suites. So we do see the need for those spaces. While those schools are not what they were back when we were closer to the 26, 26,500 number, they're still very needed as far as that goes and as far as their capacity goes. So when we looked at them located where they are geographically, where we could add, where they don't necessarily have that enrollment, we could be adding certain programs there, we could be looking at our early childhoods. we could be looking at our early childhood programs there. So that's why we chose to recommend those schools for replacement, even though their enrollment wasn't what it was one in the past, it's still very valid.
Okay, that is super helpful. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Benavides?
Thank you. I'm going to steal their taglines because my heart is Texas full. Thank you, thank you, thank you for putting our special needs facilities and children on the list because they are just such a vital part of our community. And yes, we are here. We're your community to serve you, and we thank you so much because I know, you know, we serve so much to help those in need, and the impact, wow. I mean, I don't even know what's bigger than wow in Texas, wow. But yes, thank you so much. And as far as central elementary and the tear downs, I went to central. I went to central for first through sixth grade, and my backyard was their playground. So I grew up right there in South Carrollton, and I, the first thing I thought of is where are all the children going to go? I mean, because surely we're not going to rebuild in the summer, so may I ask that?
And that is part of the plans and part of the discussions, and there's, there's different options, and that's, that's still to be discussed.
Okay, all right. Well, when it was time to come home, my mother would flick the back porch light, and I knew I had to get home. And as a teenager, when we built the track, that was my weight loss plan. Anything I ate wrong, I was out there running that track. But thank you so much. Again, my heart is Texas full, and I'm very, very happy of how thorough you covered everything. The impact in my mind is like, yes, because you did such a fabulous job. Thank you.
Ms. Brady?
The committee did an amazing job. Presenters, super amazing. Like, you guys, that was incredible. Professionals, completely. And I'm very excited to see all of the things you included in this plan. My question is cut probably to Malcolm again. Malcolm, are we completely done with the 2018 bond? And if the answer is no, which I'm pretty sure it is because it's supply chain, blah, 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 will we be done before election day? And if the answer is no, then does that matter when we're asking the community for our money? So it's a three-prong, three-pronged question.
There we go. I'll try to be brief because it's a very complicated question, and it's a good one. You never want to be out, out. We saw the damage of that. I mean, remember that our bonds are there so that if we need a major HVAC replacement, we don't have to go to that M and O money. That M and O money is the same one that pays our teachers. So you never want your INS to be out, out. That's a dangerous place to be. So yes, we're at about 300 million out of the 350 of the 2018 bond spent, with works slated for this summer of about 20 million of that. So we are well on our way to spending down the 2018 money, keeping a little in our contingency because if the election does not go well, we're going to be rubbing those pennies together to make sure we can keep the district going and capital needs rolling over. So that's part one. Part two, we also don't step out May 1, or May 7th, and have projects straight out the ground. We will have some time to design them, about six to nine months in design, then we'll have to get designed, we'll have to figure out how to mow sites and go in there with temporary buildings and things like that, and do all the construction stuff we've seen over the last two years. So that 716 million doesn't come available all in one go. So that will be a five-year spend down, so that'll take us from 23 to 28, and we'll spend that systematically through those years.
Okay. I'm sorry, probably a better question would have been, have we delivered everything we promised in the last bond?
Substantially, yes. We're about that 80% mark. Those last seven campuses, strategically, Central, Carrollton, Farmers Branch, McCoy for no rose meeting, Country Place, were kept to the end in the effort to come back with another bond. So what we have going on this summer are non-structural critical needs, so that if we got a bond, we could proceed straight into replacing those schools. When we looked at the 2018 bond, there was just enough to disrupt those buildings, but without actually making substantial work. So about $5 to $7 million at each one of those buildings. We couldn't really do anything with that. So what we did was strategically said, let's work on the work we can do, and then prepare to replace those buildings like we should. So we kept that money. So if the bond fails, that money's sitting there right available, it's all documented in your bond report, we will go back and complete the 2018 scope at those campuses. If the 2023 bond is successful, it's hope, then we get to replace those campuses, which is the ultimate, the best solution for that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hatfield?
Yes, I'll just echo from the Bond Oversight Committee to your question. I think it's important to note that the Bond Oversight Committee was also a part of the conversation with making sure that we waited on those last campuses in the event that the next bond passed, so that we didn't spend money unnecessarily on something that could be replaced. So there was considerable conversation in the Bond Oversight Committee as the transition of this process was happening. So I think that's just from, for the Board's benefit to know that the Bond Oversight Committee was also looking to the future, and as they were looking at how the district was spending down the funds, they were monitoring that and asked a lot of questions to make sure that we were not acting too swiftly. So I just think that's important for my colleagues to know. And my question was also about the replacement campuses, and it was about, I know Malcolm spoke to the capacity in looking at the demographers' reports, but are we building those to the same capacity or already looking at programming changes there? And they may have different capacities than what they have now, is one of my questions.
All right. So we have that great tree analogy, and we're really setting down those roots. And what I said to the committee was, we're not in a position to say that right now. What we have to do is assemble the stakeholders of the attendance group there, we need to look at the needs of the district when the money's approved, and then we'll start to look at those decisions. I can tell you that they'll be close in capacity. Operating elementaries at that 600-ish mark is a good efficiency. It's good steward, being, continuing to be good stewards of that money. But as far as the specifics, it would be irresponsible. What we need to do is, once the money is available, then we get with that feeder pattern, with those principals, with those parents, and we start to figure out the details for that campus.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions, comments? Ms. Benavides and Ms. Derek?
I found the words, and I learned it at Elementary School Central, super caliphagilistic, ex viadocious.
Ms. Derek?
I just want to provide a little bit of clarification on the bond dollars, just for, I think, knowledge for everyone. And finance, please intervene if I need more clarification on this, but we, when a bond passes, you don't go out and get all of the dollars at once. You only take out the amount of the projects you have ready to go. And so I think that the previous bond, the one prior to 2018, even had dollars still rolling over up until not too long ago. And so that's very normal, so I don't know if that helps you, Ms. Brady, with understanding that it's very common for all of the bond dollars not to get fully used up until the projects are ready to go.
I'm less concerned about the money than I am about what we told the community would happen.
Gotcha, gotcha. Yeah.
Any further questions, comments?
I just wanted to also say thank you. I got wrapped up in my question and didn't say how wonderful this has been, and it is very evident that all of you were learning and growing together, and I'm sure you made new friends and developed new relationships along the way, and your passion for the district and for our community is evident, and I thank you for your time to the whole committee, and we really appreciate the dedication that went into this presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Hrbachek?
Yeah, and for my board colleagues, as you think about this over the next couple of days or weeks, you can go to the website under the Citizens Act, the Bond Committee, and all of the presentations that the committee saw are there, as well as meeting notes, frequently asked questions, a lot of data and information if you have questions about some of the specific items. There's a lot of things to consider, you know, if and when we decide to take action either way on this, you know, the thoughts of our community, the amount, you know, this is, you know, a significant amount of money that future boards, you know, would, would deal with for years. Larry's kind of going, right? But impactful money as well, things to think about, like Malcolm said, as, you know, the projects aren't ready May 8th, because it would be Monday. But that, you know, there's, you know, it could be an estimated year, year and a half before projects even start. So as you saw, some of the identification of old, oldish, new, newish, everything is in the, you know, year, year and a half, too. You know, considering how the rest of the community, as I said before, would, you know, view this, is it best for the voters to decide, you know, all of those things that I ask you to consider and think about and reach out with questions, you know, to help aid as we get up to the next steps that Dr. Shackman mentioned, you know, as far in the process. Thanks.
Thank you. One last thing.
Ms. Marsh? Could we go ahead and get the Bond Committee to stand? We, a lot of, a lot of you are here that did not present. We want to show our appreciation to you and acknowledge and recognize you for your hard work.
I'm going to go ahead and say your names. Ms. Brandy Smith, Dr. Ruth Shackman, Ms. Diane Etheridge, Mr. Noe Franco, Mr. Billy Bob Messer, Ms. Diana Nunez, Ms. Tamika Adams, and Mr. Rob Shattuck. I remember you in that Trojan costume. I, I wouldn't have recognized you unless you'd said that, but now I see it. Yes, it was. Touche. That's very true, very true. I want to thank all of you. It was a wonderful presentation. I, several Board members have talked about how it's made them feel really good. I think hearts full, hearts happy, super caliphagilistic. And I, I think one of those reasons, or a couple of reasons why it's made us feel the way we do tonight, and I share those feelings, is that, A, we've seen a lot of former students speaking tonight, products of this school district, and you are impressive. And B, I so appreciate that you all shared, or so many of you shared your whys. You guys spent months and months working really hard talking about the what, and the how, and the how much. And there's a lot to disagree on, right? I mean, those can be contentious conversations, as you guys alluded to, even when you're not just talking about bathrooms, right? But you, I think you demonstrate to the community how easy it is to come together when, when you keep your why as your primary focus, and, and we all, I think in this room, have shared the same why, right? And, and that's, that's what's important, and I think that's what, what I found really fulfilling and from listening to your presentation tonight. So thank you all. I know we've kept you a little longer probably than we said that we would, but we appreciate the information and we appreciate the months and months and hours of, of hard work that you put into this. Thank you. Let's give him one more hand, okay? All right. That was Agenda Item 3A, the Citizens 2023 Bond Planning Committee Report. We're going to move now to Agenda Item Number Four, and in a moment, those of you who came for Agenda Item Three will, will be able to slip out quietly if you like. And we're going to move to Agenda Item 4A, which is a closed meeting, closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to consult with the district's attorney in person or by phone on a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the district under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with Chapter 551 of the Texas Local Government Code pursuant to the Texas Government Code Section 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee to review and discuss candidate's applications for the position of superintendent of the schools. Audience members are welcome to remain in the boardroom as board members recess and move into the executive conference room for deliberations. Time is now 6:23 PM. Time is now 6:23 PM.
It's snowing in Flower Mound.
Really?
Wait, what?
Snowing in Flower Mound?
Snowing in sleets.
At Creekview it's snowing.
At Creekview?
Oh, it's snowing?
At Creekview it's snowing. That's by my house!
You can see the sleet coming down the street.
Getting to look a lot like...
It's gonna be a lot greener.
I'm sorry. We're hot. Nobody stayed for us, except for Dee.
Where's everybody?
Larry stayed.
Yeah, Dee gets credit.
Sorry, Dee.
No, I think it dropped when you were walking by. Is it yours?
Dee and the tech staff.
It couldn't walk because I filled it this week.
Appreciate the officer.
It's not mine.
Is Brian coming back?
He should be.
He was talking.
What's it doing? Brian.
You think he'll remember?
You want to pass him down?
Yeah.
Pass it down.
Pass it down to your flash drive.
So she doesn't have to walk all the way down.
I'm sorry, oh.
It's too late. We're waiting.
Terry, you have yours?
What's that?
Yours flash drive?
What? Your flash drive.
You pass it down.
Oh, I hand that out before the meeting starts.
Are you ready?
Hold on a second, we're trying to get Brian situated.
Yeah, we're ready.
I can carry him.
Oh, so you gotta wait just a second.
We're back on session at 8:21 PM. Having returned from closed session. And so, we are now on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is the end of our agenda adjournment. We are now adjourned at 8:21 PM. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Stay warm.
It's snowing apparently.
For now?
Not for now, with Brian.
Right now?